August nineteenth, twenty twenty one. We have a full board of selectmen present, town administrator present, and we have Fred Muller videotaping for the general public. And Linda Mickerson will upload that to the town website as well as YouTube. Okay. Under small business, I have some meeting minutes to...
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular minutes of August fifth, two twenty twenty one. As written.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have a non-public. Do I have a motion for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the eight P M. non-public minutes of August, yeah, twenty twenty one.
I'll second that. Motion's been made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it doesn't look like anything in here we need to seal.
It was a higher end discussion.
Okay. I'm gonna open up for a quick public comment section. And the old home day committee is on the agenda, so anything outside of that? Nothing, Fred? Okay, close the public comment, bring it back to town business. And we have an update of old home day from the old home day committee.
Can we hold off for about ten or fifteen minutes for that until Tom gets here?
We sure can.
He's on his way up. Outside of King, well, hopefully we can clean in here a little better.
Let's go over the rest, uh, the revenues.
Sure.
Go in the ladder order and start with those. So we're gonna go over MS four thirty four, which is revised estimated revenues for the town.
So what I provided for you in your packet is the MS four thirty four, the revised estimated revenue. That document is a Department of Revenue document that's required the board, requires the board to review prior to tax rate setting. We are not there yet, but typically early September, they'll, the board will review these numbers. What I also provided you in your packet is the MS six thirty six, just the revenue page, which is what the board used to propose to the voters as an estimated revenue. And then the third document is the back page, I reversed it so that you could just look at the final numbers, is the anticipated revenue out of the software program. So current, current year-to-date revenue, we have six hundred ninety-two thousand eighty dollars, eighty-nine dollars. Outstanding items that are projected to be in the funds before the end of the year would be the highway, highway block grant, which is the last payment for this calendar year. Nineteen thousand five twelve, I've not heard of anything that's gonna change in that. The rooms and meals revenue, we had anticipated and budgeted a hundred and thirty-five thousand. I'm not sure if either of you have heard, any of you have heard, um, any changes at the state level that we will not get that.
No, we don't.
And then the flood control typically comes in a little higher. We always budget conservatively, and so our budget expected is seventy thousand. So to include those, um, items that are still haven't been deposited in our account, that brings us up to nine hundred sixteen thousand six hundred and one. Our, our budget anticipated revenues for the, through the budget process was one million ninety-seven four thirty-two. So the uncollected balance for the last five months is a hundred and eighty thousand eight thirty-one. So that's roughly about thirty-six thousand one sixty-six per month, for each month. And that would put us at our goal, so...
That should be easy.
I believe that the same, if our, those three pieces that are scheduled to come in from the state, uh, hit our bank accounts, then I think we can very easily meet our goal for the, um...
And no revenues, um, from what we discussed about our new gopher grant?
I have not received those yet, so, um, I was going to bring it up to the board, I can mention it now, that, uh, this, earlier this week, I applied for a A R A P grant, which is a, a sub-grant of the gopher grant, and the town's portion of that grant is three hundred and one thousand dollars. And they informed us that, or me, that, um, we would be receiving that in two installments. Uh, there's a very extensive criteria of what we can and cannot spend that on, cannot be included with, um, the surplus rainy day fund, um, just, um, regular budgeting. Um, so there'll be a public hearing to accept those funds as soon as I appear and receive the first installment, which I've been, you know, guaranteed that we will get that, I'll put it in the paper with seven days' notice, and then we'll discuss it further.
Will arrive this calendar year. Half.
Half will run this year and half will run next year.
Half, half this year.
What's nice about it is, uh, Lean and I have kind of gone over some of the issues in town that we may be able to use it for, but what's nice is they let us take and increase our budget by four point one percent per year, which averages around seventy, seventy-one thousand. That, that money automatically moves per our budget for years, so we have four years to use the money. So even if we just took that, say, stayed flat at seventy thousand per year, we're only twenty thousand off from the entire total just by using the four point one percent overages on our budgets, which is allowed. So coming up with twenty thousand dollars to use out of that gopher grant should be an easy thing to do. So I think that, you know, looking at the way they've set it up and Lean's gone through the numbers today, I think it's gonna be a, something that we can use that money on, some things that'll benefit the town.
Rather than taking it out of the pockets of taxpayers.
Yes, yeah.
Do you, do you want me to clarify on that a little bit? So what...
Well, maybe at the next meeting we'll do that because...
Okay, all right, okay. And we can do that. So I will keep you posted with public hearing.
Yep.
And hopefully we'll have some departments here to give their input and, you know, hopes that they can get some of that funding, but, um, there are, um, requirements for us to follow, to use that money.
Ad-locks.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for that update, Lean. I think that that, uh, we're in real good shape with that.
Okay, so just for the record, the MS four thirty four is presented, we're gonna stay with the same revenues as we projected, no changes.
Right.
Okay.
Conservative, I'm glad we did conservatively.
Yeah. It seems to be paying off for us.
So I'll be able to fill that out and submit it to the state.
Okay, you still want me to wait and go through some more items?
Yeah, Tom, Chris, Tom is on here, yeah.
All right, you've got some, uh, personnel policies and procedures here?
Yep. Can you do me a favor and go through the mailbox items? And then I'm gonna get the i- itemized, the changes in the, in the email.
Oh, you did?
And I think it might be helpful for you guys to be able to turn to those pages. So I'm gonna just go get that, print it off, if you wanna review the mailbox.
Going down to mailbox, I think.
Hang on, before you do that, then, while we just, while we just...
Sure.
...talks this a little bit.
All right.
Is, uh, I know we got, we all got, uh, you know, an email covering some of the changes, our recommendations. And I hadn't even reviewed it today, 'cause I was on the road today.
I didn't even see it today.
So I would rather that we utilize that and come back at the next meeting and make those changes, rather than trying to do it tonight in a hurry, so that we're reading, you know what I'm saying?
I haven't seen them yet myself, Bob, so I'm gonna agree with you on that. Or wait till the next meeting, I guess.
I, I did review them, but there's nothing earth-shattering, I think Wayne is...
Okay. Nothing we needed to tell you, okay. So we'll let her bring them out, and we'll do a quick review of them, and then we'll have some time.
Yeah.
I'm gonna agree with you, I haven't even seen them. I was home for just enough time to eat dinner before we got here, so... Okay, two of the mailbox items. I guess we gotta thank Bob this week, he went over after old home day, and there were some outlets that had no power to them in the library, and, uh, I think a breaker had tripped. And in doing so, we got a letter from Mary, um, there was some, a light fixture that had four bulbs in it, and two of them could be changed out with Bob's height, and two of them were rusted right in place, and she's asked to update the fixture. I personally don't have any problem with updating that fixture.
I'll tell you what it is, there's two of them that are corroded right into the fixture.
Right.
So those couldn't be replaced, they just broke right out, but they're corroded in there.
Yeah.
And I got her a couple of LEDs, ball bulb for that, so she's got plenty of light.
Okay.
But that fixture should be replaced, you know? And I don't think it's a big deal, I think, uh, as I said to Lean, you probably get the handyman to do it, 'cause you know it's not hard. You disconnect, you take it down, disconnect it, hook it up with a, I told her, you take a coat hanger, you hook it up, hang the other fixture there, while you work on the wire nuts.
Yep.
Take it out.
With the circuit breaker on.
Yeah.
With the circuit breaker on, yeah. You know, which, which, uh, fixture was it? Coming right, coming in the entryway.
Okay, not the dome ones.
No.
No, the one right on the ceiling.
Okay. So, um, Lean, do you wanna follow up with our handyman to get a new fixture for that?
Yeah, okay, to go with that?
I think so, Mike, I agree with that, right?
Figure I estimated fifty dollars, an average fifty dollars for the part.
Yeah, it should be...
Maybe a little bit more, fixtures can be a little bit more sometimes.
Uh, I... What kind of fig... The, the type of fixtures that are there.
Is pretty...
You know, you're looking at twenty-five, thirty bucks a pound. So expensive.
Good, 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 good.
We have a, um, somebody in the town office is here, gonna take vacation, I'd already signed it as part of my pre-signing process here, from eight-thirty to nine-thirty, forty-hour work week. Lean, another good thing, uh, we had an old bill that we didn't realize was outstanding for the aspect of, um, testing on Kimball Pond Road. So we got a check for the six thirty-five reimbursement from the insurance company. I think all of you guys have signed that and seen it. We've made a letter here, I'd like to sign tonight, being August nineteenth, um, thanking Rainey Ole for his, uh, his services from our selectmen. So you've got it on here?
Yep. Thank you, Leonard, for Rainey Ole.
Middle.
Yep. Yeah, so, uh, I think that's a good thing for us selectmen to send out to them, so thank him for being the, uh, what's the name of the job they...
Moderator.
The moderator for the town meeting for the school. We're gonna do the town section of it. Do I think we'll all use that pen, Lean?
Yeah.
That design's nice.
Come here, Bob. Thank you. Right here.
Yes.
We got a notice from the, um, school board, from the chair. Let us know that their, uh, March twelfth, twenty twenty-two will be their school district meeting. Uh, and yes, that will be after our town meeting.
I guess the gist of it, I think Lean was concerned that, um, it would affect the town report. And the thing is, I think Clem has reassured us that it won't.
Right. And the other thing, uh, they have vacation week the week before, so they wanna make sure that their town meeting doesn't cut off people that are possibly on vacation and not coming back, so I think that's the first time that that's happened. Yep, I see that, I'm gonna, I'll finish up these, they stuck in there. Okay, um, we have an abatement that's come before the selectmen, uh...
The Board of Assessors.
Board of Assessors. And, uh, it's kind of, we took a look at it, um, it has to do with the solar panels, and, um, this was, or last year was the first year that we sent out a bill, um, taxing people on their solar panels, but they could file for a, uh, abatement, and we had one person file that abatement in a late period of time. And, uh, he asked for reconsideration on it, and they denied him, so, uh, it's kind of coming up the ladder here, but Lean's given this...
Just a quick one.
Person some stuff, uh, to maybe help them in the process, so we'll go from there. And I did double-check with the departments to make sure that all the notices went out, uh, timely, and everybody had a chance to have them. Um, we did some, or Lean did some research to see if we could get some, um, help with training, people on skid stairs and our equipment, and, um, it looks like there is training that could be provided to our town employees for a cost of eight fifty. I think that we should bring the department head in and discuss it with him as well. But I don't see any problem if we could put our town employees together and get them all trained and certified, um, so that they have the stamp on the...
I, I was gonna, I don't know if I would be in a rush to get the new employees, like they have to be on job list, probationary area, then reconsider, and continue opportunities, but I hate to invest all this money, boots, training, and then all of a sudden, we have a typical turnover.
Right.
I, I know one employee definitely could benefit from it.
That's a one-time fee, so you can have one or ten people, and it's the one-time fee, five dollars training.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Yeah, so it's kind of an overall training, and it might not be a bad thing for them all to...
Okay.
I agree with you.
On an off day, obviously.
If you remember, I was gonna check with the associated contract that's, you know, G C's.
Yep.
Usually have that, and, um, I talked to a super that's doing the D I A project, and, uh, they had some done on their job site, but they only do it for the membership. So that's why... And then the other, I guess the other thing that's problematic to find a place was the fact that our skid stairs, two thousand and seven.
That's right.
And they usually train on newer machines.
Correct, if we had a vendor that we were dealing with, it wouldn't be an issue getting the vendor that sold us the equipment. But after talking with Bob and doing a little bit of research, we, uh, the response from some of the individuals, like the Concord, uh, company that has, sells Hollanders, because of the age, you wouldn't...
Why don't we just direct, uh, the transportation manager to working with us when he gets back?
Is the, um, yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, and we can, we can have him to talk about it. I noticed there was one for a forklift as well, which they run down there, is this the forklift one or the skid stair one?
Skid stair.
It is.
The skid stair does the forklift. It's an attachment on the skid stair.
Right, but there's also forklifts down there.
Like the, just, may, end jack?
No, no, there's a regular little forklift down there that they drive inside the building, I think, if...
That's the skid stair, they pulled the skid stair in with the attachment.
No little forklift down there as well?
No, no.
I think one advantage is it takes it out of Woody's hands, 'cause it's a person that does the training.
Yep.
You know, and sometimes you can learn something instead of something.
Just one little tip on it, you know, it ain't going a long way.
No, I think it's from an ocean point, but not that we follow ocean, but just from a safety standpoint, we have professional training, professionals doing it.
And we can extend it, we can extend it to the highway department as well, you know, if we go further.
If it's a one-time fee, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay, um, there's something I put in here, um, a thing updating us on our legal fees to date for all departments. So far, as an entire, um, town section, we still have plenty in our legal, um, only 'cause we bumped up ours this year. Um, but they are way over their, uh... If you look, they're at six hundred and twenty-five percent of their budget on the zoning board legal.
Overspent.
Overspent, they've got a, they've got a case, uh, before them now up on Meadow Lane that has, um, a Z B A appeal. And so they're going through that process, and part of that process, the attorneys have had, um, several meetings, so I wanted to bring the board abreast of that to know, so, um, you know, just the billing on that one was, um, three thousand ninety-two dollars last month, and this month it's twenty-eight fifty, seven sixty. It is going in front of an appeals board, not a, not a court. Very soon, so we're gonna have some more billing on it. I just want to make the board aware of that.
So one of those lines is the Board of Assessors line. We typically budget about ten thousand dollars, and that covers San Souci and legal fees that would go to the, before the Board of, uh, Tax and Land Appeals.
Yep.
And, um, where we've settled a lot of our outstanding, um, utility appeals. You may not see that much spending there, but right now, we're, we're okay with the...
We're okay now. But I just wanna bring it to you, when I saw the bill, I was surprised to see such a big bill in there again, so... Um, it looks like we've all signed a wage scale increase for Brian Tyler, going up to, um, step two. So I just wanna make the board aware of that as well. Um, we have in here, Bob, you didn't sign, but we also have a wetlands permit. If you wanna check that out, that we have to, uh, just review, and this is just our copy on it. Um, and the last thing I have on this, there you go, Bob, look at that, this stuff we're going there afterwards. The last thing I have as part of the mailbox items is, um, I had asked Eric Hodgman to look at making us a, um, a couple of new, uh, voting boxes, ballot boxes. And I wanted the construction to be authentic to the original ones that we had there in place for the town. So he did a, um, box joint corner sample to show us that he could manufacture the same box joints that were done, um, on those boxes. Fred probably remembers the year that we got those boxes, but we have the paperwork written up on it. We're gonna try and do the same metal-type corners, the same trunk-style handles, the same Dunbar and Signa on them, but have, have them be the size of the aluminum boxes, so they're a little bit larger than the original box. Um, only for the fact that we get more ballots now to fill them. So his proposal is to make two of these ballot boxes. And, uh, it will be slightly higher than this, 'cause he did the sizing on the original ballot box, but he said you're just talking a little bit more footage. Um, the labor for each box was five eighty-five, um, all finished. The red oak for the boxes were fifty-four dollars, you can see the, uh, supplies weren't much. Other shop supplies were thirty dollars, so the total boxes were six sixty-nine. Um, and this estimate is just an estimate, 'cause it'll be a little bit bigger, so the total was thirteen thirty-eight. And I thought that was pretty reasonable, to have some hand-built boxes, uh, built, but I wanted to hear from the other selectmen and kinda see if we can bring this...
What's up policy when it goes over a thousand? That's still kind of low.
Nothing over a thousand, it's ten thousand, so...
So, if, I think we're... I mean, is he a Dunbar resident? I think the authenticity we've been desiring for years.
Yep.
Uh, and those aluminum boxes need to be replaced, so that's gonna be an expense incurred anyways.
Yep.
I have no issue with that.
Yeah, you know, we look, it, it's oak, the guys use some solid oak.
Yeah. And he's doing the original.
That's pricey in itself, and, and the thickness that he's using isn't very easy to get, so...
Uh, he did say all the oak is taken right off his land here in Dunbar as well, so it's all been machined and planed down.
That's another aspect of authenticity, too.
Dunbar oak, and it'll be built in Dunbar.
Yeah, you gotta run it through a planer to get it that thin.
Right.
You know, so I mean, and then he's gonna be using, you know, uh, similar hardware on the boxes.
Yep.
And that has a price of its own, so, you know, it's, it sounds like a lot of money, but I don't really think it's a lot of money.
Right. And there are some pieces of hardware he couldn't get, that I'm gonna see if I can have Joe Marie research through a specialty hardware catalog, but I have him.
Yeah.
So it will be slightly higher than this, so I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, proposal from Eric Hodgman, General Carpentry, um, to supply two new ballot boxes to match the size of the aluminum ballot boxes we have now, um, in red oak, uh, knowing that it'll be slightly higher than this thirteen thirty-eight bid, um, because of the material and hardware costs.
I'll second that.
Okay. And when we get the material and hardware costs, we'll, uh, have another motion to finalize that.
Okay, um, and also ask delivery date, I'd have it before, next election.
I would too, I don't know if that's gonna happen, but...
Well, he's got the whole winter to work on it.
That's true.
So the thing is, I like to have a delivery date of, of what is stipulated, and a procurement date.
Okay.
So do you wanna do something different? Do you wanna table that till you get your fi, till you get a close enough bill so you can amend it?
I would like him to work on only for the fact the hardware won't probably be part of his project, but we'll...
Right, well, my, my, my point isn't the price, 'cause the price, we've agreed that this is a good price, but if you cable that, and you can still get him to work on it, but you can amend it after and change the cost of that. It's up to you to do it either way.
We can approve it as it, as it written typed, just amend the cost.
Why don't we approve it as written tonight as part of the motion, Lean, uh, knowing that we'll have to amend the, uh, final number? I'm thinking we might not get the final number till probably just before we...
Before we vote next year, no.
That's what I'm taking. So, uh, this is a sample we've made here at the office. So you go ahead and call him, Lean.
I will.
Get him working on it, I think it's, uh...
So you, we all voted?
Yes.
Emotion?
Motion's been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's it for the mailbox items, now I'm gonna bring old home day committee update, uh, from the old, old home day people. Yep. Who wants to start out?
I just wanna come up. We'll join them.
Ken, you've gotta be careful when you come up to the front, hey.
I'm used to doing it.
Yeah. Hey, just for the record, when everybody talks, can we just say our name and where we live, just so that the recording is accurate? Who wants to start out?
Don.
Don, Don, come over here.
You're blocking the camera.
Video.
Oh, sorry. Who's starting, Don, Tom?
John's not the figures.
Yeah. But, uh, one. State your name, Don.
John Stevens. Where you went to, whatever.
Okay.
I wanna start off with, uh, this is a great crew of people that we work with, that just hitched in, I wanna just admire, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, that, uh, uh, I don't think this could've, could've come off as well, we had to work that everything put in, so...
Especially those ice cream scoopers.
Oh, yes.
I was gonna say, in spite of the ice cream scooper.
Trying to cut our hands open.
Yeah, so, um, no, you've, uh, it looked like it went really well, I mean, a lot of positive, positive, pos, positive con.
Uh, I think the word is extremely well.
I'll let somebody else say that, because I don't wanna, you know, right? And, um, and we, we have had a few people, uh, who would like to become members of the old home day committee, who once they contact us, uh, who can bring it, bring it to you.
Good.
Yeah, that's, that feels nice to hear.
Only if they don't have gray hair.
Who's, well, who's going next? What do we have?
No, that's only a little bit of humor.
Only if they have hair, right?
Anything else for the update?
I got a good community, uh, output, uh, when we set up all the tents and everything on Friday.
Yep.
Where it was just a beehive of activity, we got everything up and hurried, got the stage set up, thanks to Tom, and, you know, so, I think the stage really made this, you know, the center point of the whole thing, and then the way we turned the, uh, twenty-by-forty tent, so people could sit undercover and still see it, have a place to eat, visit, type, you know, in comfort.
Yep. I agree, and the distance was nice.
Yeah.
To keep between the, uh, people sitting down and the people performing.
Right. And then the chairs out in front of the tent, for those that wanted to gather there, sun was a little warm.
Is that something you're gonna plan on doing, is that, um, that trailer with that fold-out type stage?
Yeah.
Every year? That was a nice feature, I think.
Yeah. And, you know, we had the banners made for either side, hanging down, so when people take pictures, they know where they came from.
Yep.
So, I think, uh...
Exhibit, the exhibitor of Tricky Dicky on stage was fantastic.
Yes, yes, he did a good job, and, you know, the kids came up, and, uh, uh, I think he, he was very entertaining. Uh, the wildlife encounters, he was running behind, he was supposed to be on it one, didn't get there till after two, so we started the talent show, and just made him be the anchor, but there were still a lot of people out there.
Those kids who stayed got a great treat with that wildlife, I think that was well-received by the children who stayed. And there was a good pile of children afterwards.
Yeah. Well, with the talent show, we didn't know how many people we were gonna have, and so that, that made it, uh, kind of rough, because some of them came in at the last minute, but we had, you know, nine people, and, uh, nine different acts, and it worked out good. And, and what a variety, you know, from, uh, Bill Zeller, you know, reading a poem, to, you know, the girls, the young girls dancing and that, the free-form, and...
Young, young men on the drums. Young men on the drums.
Yeah. So, you know, it was, it was, uh, uh, a good bunch there. Next year, we'll work on maybe having prizes and something along that lines to, uh, have a little more incentive. We didn't know what to expect this year. I think that, uh, having the Nevers Band, uh, playing, you know, when the parade was coming in and everything else, and the marches and that. Uh, I think that uh, having the Nevers Band uh, playing, you know, when the parade was coming in and everything else and the marches and that, why, that was a nice touch. Uh, the parade overall was uh, well attended. We had a good blend of all kinds of uh, trucks and cars and uh, floats and uh, I think that uh, worked out well. And uh, the horses were a new touch. My uh, Minutemen were gonna fire off volleys every now and then, but because of the horses, we couldn't.
I saw the uh, I saw a few police officers on their new vehicles. They were they were trying out their new vehicles. They were on their horses.
Yeah.
And I think it's uh, I'm just waiting for them to ask for a new vehicle and I'm gonna offer them a horse.
And then you bar, yeah, then you build the bar and then yeah.
Oh, boy.
I'll let Tom talk about the food, because that's his special day.
Yeah, the uh, we bought more food than last time and last time we hit it, run out. Cheeseburgers early, when that was not a good thing. Uh, so we we sold approximately, give or take, three hundred hamburgers, cheeseburgers, two hundred and eighty hot dogs, two hundred and fifty bags of chips, six hundred waters and sodas, and uh, twelve veggie burgers. So it uh, we had a good setup. Uh, in the past, you know, I've almost like been there or I've always been there running the food tent. We tried to let other people come in that had, they've done it enough times now that they could do it. Uh, G Larson was kind of in charge of the the cooking in the food tent. We had volunteers from the garden club that had worked in the past there. They knew what they were doing. We had some young children there that were helping out.
They loved it. They did a great job.
They had, they were just having a blast, you know, we could give them their responsibility. Uh, so it was e- even just selling the food was fun.
Yeah.
Uh. It was an activity.
It was an activity, yeah, so it it really had the feel. Uh, several people mentioned to me, it was very comfortable, easy feeling, you know, so that they didn't feel like there was under pressure or the things were chaotic. They felt very relaxed. They had a fun time because there was just no pressure. Uh, you know, part of that might have been, we did do it last year because of COVID and this year, uh, they were able, people were able to get out and that was like a two-year thing they hadn't experienced, is let's get outside and just listen to some music. The the uh, we set it up so the ice cream was over on the on the radiant side this year, so that it was far enough away from the stage that lines of people for ice cream were not interfering with the activities on the stage. And uh, the stage added the flavor. We had picked up that stage late last, well, early last year. Um, for Nevers Band to use because the city conquered had a portable stage made by the same company, but it was made in nineteen sixty-one, so it was a little bit old. Uh, and it was small and everything was correct by hand, opened it up, and it was about half as big. But when the band, we noticed when the band would play, like it's front of State House, we don't use a bandstand or Eagle Square, any place we couldn't use a bandstand, it really didn't sound very good. You know, you've got a thirty-five, forty-piece orchestra and when you set them out on the the grass, it it doesn't go anywhere. Uh, even in the bandstand, it just didn't work because it was too tight and the sound would go out in three hundred and sixty degrees where it didn't project forward. So uh, I offered the use of the stage this year, uh, and we had multiple comments about how great the band sounded. And the difference was the stage, it was the same band. It just sounded that much better because they were in proper.
So you guys own that stage now?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize that. That's great.
Oh, we gotta get a budget increase by the way.
See these guys.
The uh, but the other thing is when you had the acts on the stage, they became real acts, you know, the talent show was not somebody in the bandstand, it was on a real stage. They felt like they were on stage. Uh, the magician, the drummers, everybody, when they're on the stage, it's a whole different feel from you're down standing on a little pedestal or something on the grass. You don't really feel like you're putting on a performance when that you do when you're on stage. Uh, we had brought our own sound system and my wife coordinated that and uh, you know, that went pretty well. So for our first year doing the talent show and learning how to do some logistics of it, it went pretty good. Uh, and next year, you know, we'll we'll have it gone even smoother.
Yeah, I thought so from a few weeks before. There was only one person that signed up. I thought it ended up pretty good with the either.
Yeah, there's a variety of acts. It wasn't just any.
Yeah, same thing. It was a variety.
Well, we've we're gonna streamline the application forms so that they can pick it up at the town office and stuff like this and mail it in. And uh, if they've got pictures, all the better because that way we can use them in publicity and uh, let people know who's gonna be appearing and you know, get the order down a little sooner, you know, where where there'll be, so maybe we'll have up to three hours of talent show. Just.
No, I, uh, my comment is from the from the beginning to the end, the parade, A-plus. I had no issues with the parade, even the the uh, the town um, uh, truck was washed for it. It was, it looked shiny.
Yep.
Um, it was just fantastic. Uh, the thing is um, uh, the food, no one was complaining about the food and they weren't quarter pounders, they were third of pounders. They were huge hamburgers. Not huge hamburgers. Um, ice cream, A-plus as always, and uh, you know, and then entertainment off to the side with the sound, I agree with that. Overall, and it was such a low-key event, it just, you felt like there was no pressure there at all. It was just very low-key and so it was, you could stroll around, hit a few booths. Uh, and that made the day because it was, again, it was no pressure, although some of the committee members were all uptight, but little things behind the scenes, I said, from the outside was low-key and it was well done. So thank you to the committee. I thought you did a great job.
Ken? Ken Kerber at thirty-one Stark Highway North, wanna speak to two things. One, my piece of the action is demonstrating some of the crafts and that sort. And I was really excited to see how many kids came up and had a chance to just make a little pot with the clay or uh, actually start with a piece of wool, card it, take it over and see it spun into a piece of cloth. It was a nice bit of learning and a sense of that. As well as the blacksmithing, kids always loved to take a piece of metal and Addison Chase is fabulous at working with kids, so I could walk away and you just ran that by itself, so that was good. But the other thing that kinda surprised me is that um, was real benefit. The old Home Day provided the venue for the historical society to get feedback from the populace in town. Historical society had been kinda waning and we're down, I think, five members or something. But they had a tent right next to the entrance to the second floor of the town hall, so there's a lot of traffic through there. A lot of people stopped and just asked about the committee, why they weren't meeting, why the school wasn't being open for during the summertime, the blacksmith shop, all that kind of stuff. So we got a tremendous amount of feedback that we could not have gotten any other way. So there's a lot of interesting fallout from the old Home Day community building concept, all apart from those people having fun, so I very excited about it having happened.
Well, Ken, I'll do another spin on that as well. I uh, I stayed there most of the day, actually, I think stayed all day until they closed it to um, try and help with some of the tours from the second floor of the old town hall and that restoration committee, and they had a booth out front and then we had members set up on the back stairs out here with the doors open. And I could not believe the traffic coming in there. Now, some of the traffic, because they caught them out front here, came around the building to us and then other people just walking by and came up to them, open doors, had no idea what they were walking into, but when they got there, they saw the pictures we had spread out. Uh, we did small group tours upstairs. I I myself, I think I brought fifty or sixty people up there in small groups, four or five at a time. And I know several other members did the same thing and it was uh, the young families in town that wanna see that second floor used again and they couldn't believe there was a stage up there and they had never seen it. Uh, it brought a lot of good um, eye-opening awareness to a lot of young people in town that have never seen it before, like you're saying and uh, you know.
Yeah, and I I think that, but that was the other thing about old Home Day, I noticed a change in the age distribution.
Yeah.
A lot of young families, a lot of kids, and yeah, anybody that acted about nineteen eighty, whenever it was last that that was used.
Yeah.
Had never been up there, had no idea what it is, and so getting it open and exposed.
And the edu- education of the public is key to getting any bond passed.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's gonna be, that's the key.
Cause not only do you get the turnout, but that's something else you get.
Yeah, but you know, that was their first uh, you know, step as, because everything was closed down for COVID, they couldn't do it over the last year, so.
Right.
So this was one of their first openings to allow that to happen. Kind of uh, non-public public meeting where they kind of gave a pamphlet out saying this is what it's about. Nineteen ninety-one was the year it was stopped being used and had a bunch of those different history things on there, what it was used for in the past, what it could be used for in the future. Um, so the handout was pretty um, pretty well received and there was a little bit of financial stuff there that they talked about, but that part hasn't been finalized and won't be till later this fall, but it was an opportunity for a lot of young families and even people that hadn't been up there in years to see it. And I think uh, I didn't hear any negative comments. Somebody heard one negative comment that somebody had wanna, you know, have payment for that on their taxes as as part of opening it back up, but everybody else was very positive about it.
Good, encouraging. And I wanna say thank you to Don for having the uh, the state COVID vaccination available.
We got three.
We got three, and I said if you got one, it was successful, so.
You only got three vaccinations?
Yeah.
Oh, I figured that would have been swamped.
I thought it would too, because we're fifty-three percent here in Dunbar. But uh, I think that uh, I'm gonna have them out in December for Reach Across Dunbar on the eleventh. And I don't know if it'll be this vehicle, but uh, with the booster shot and that, I know my mine will be ups uh, you know, toward the end of November and that, that my eight months and that for my last shot.
Right.
So a lot of people have gotten them since then, you know, so I think that that will uh, give them another way to do it.
But overall success.
Yeah.
And that another component of the entire day.
Well, one thing that uh, uh, all the scheduling, all the volunteers and that, Ena did a lot of that and she was on the phone. She was relentless, you know. Not just the garden club people, but.
For the record, could you identify who Ena is? Could you identify who she is?
No, I mean, you know, she worked very hard.
It's his better half.
She worked real hard and uh, uh, you know, it's 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 a team effort in that, so for not being on the committee, she she did a lot.
I seen her trying to give up some of those responsibilities. She doesn't know how it works here in Dunbar. Never get to give them up.
We should also add that uh, there was a large number of people in the community that volunteered to help out that day.
Yeah.
Uh, I think if we probably counted up, there could have been as many as forty or fifty volunteers who helped with all the activities. And that's kinda what made it, took the pressure off and made it a little bit low-key is is we have all these people helping out, so you weren't strung out.
Even ice cream scoopers, the young kids dove right in. They wanted to help out.
Yeah.
I could just hand cups to them and bowls and.
That's right, yeah.
When they and they they followed procedure, had gloves on and they were just, it was an activity.
Yeah.
And uh, it was great.
And everybody was laughing and having a good time.
Right, yeah.
I will say that ice cream is so hard. We have to do a couple of things different next year. We either need to slice it, um, at the speed it's going at when there's a line of thirty people, you can't give enough scoops to make it sufficient for them. And we were giving a little less than I think we could have. There was plenty of ice cream there, but it was just so hard to scoop.
Yeah, and we we tried to address that this year. Well, we only gave you the hard ones.
Yeah.
Everybody else had easier, but we we actually had planned that this year. Um, we ordered, I get the ice cream from Shaker Pond Ice Cream in Sanford, Maine. And the guy who normally handles it was on vacation that week and I kept calling and leaving messages and calling and finally, I called the parent office because they have a retail store and I said, I said, you know, where's Dave? Oh, he's on vacation. You gotta call Brian. This is Thursday at noon.
Oh, no.
I hadn't got the ice cream yet, so I got all them and I threw my guys in the truck with the freezers and drive to Sanford, go get the ice cream. They don't even have time to deliver it. So we didn't, we were gonna get it Monday, store it at exactly the right temperature.
Oh, okay.
So it'll be ready to serve, so we got it Thursday uh, about two o'clock.
Yeah.
And I get it home that night, plugged in the freezer and then tried to do a little bit Friday, but we made, we did manage to get, I think, five or six out of the eight down to serving temperature. Yeah, all, we give her the easy answers. Uh, but yeah, again, the volunteers were great. Um, and I think the only other good report we've got is probably John can give you the budget report because that's even better.
Yeah, and and like you 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 mentioned it, can the community and whatnot? And seeing what this event looked like brought brought back, that was the uh, the wish of the group that originally stepped in when when the rec committee had to kind of back out, right? Was was the the uh, the local tread 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 transition towns initiator group and and it was the hope to see something like this happen, so it was so neat to see all the effort that went in and the people enjoying themselves. It was uh, finally.
So tell us about the numbers, how they look.
Okay, numbers, um, our budget is i- i- is uh, fifty, fifties, seven hundred, and that includes Memorial Day uh,
Yep.
which which as our calls around uh, three hundred or something like that, yeah, yeah, but but that uh, that never got spent. Bottom line, totally total total ex- ex- expenses, money out. As of today, um, there there are still things, things to have to happen, but 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 was uh, five thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars. The total income was uh, that's that that's uh, food sales, vendor s- s- spaces and whatnot, was uh, one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that uh, that uh, means out of the uh, the uh, 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 original budget as of as of today, we we are sitting at one thousand four hundred ninety-five, not not uh, not spent. Um, but but there are still a few expenses that uh, may maybe coming in uh, uh, have to be recorded in in the town town books and then 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 I I I can can update that. And then um, in about two or three weeks, we are going to have a uh, a meeting. When once the dust settles a little bit, we can can all look back and um, uh, 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 um, like like the the two two thousand nineteen, there there was some money left over. We we uh, used used a good uh, a good portion of that to uh, fix fix some tents, tents that were damaged. But based on the things that 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 we learned this year and a little bit of time to kind of think about it, it'd be good to to just just uh, use use this as as a current round number. And then we 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 can get back to you with with a a more final number and if there's any other expenses we see uh, a- as a rational thing to do, um, when do you need to know that final?
Well, we need to know it for next year's budget, but I think that, you know, looking at what you've spent and what you have left over, I think as a board, you know, we'll talk about it later, but I think we'll just leave that fifty-seven hundred dollars in those two um, lines and leave it be. It's it's good to be a little bit plus side of things in case things change for you, you know?
And they they could, yes.
Um, you know, having having that small balance left over, it just goes right back to our bottom line budget at the end of the year anyway, so I think that we'll probably keep it, not lower it down if if the other.
Yeah, I think from a town's from a town's fiscal point of view, uh, we're, the town manager's watching carefully, rumen meal, rumen meals, income, and we have some state lines which we're just watching. And so it it's nice to be able to spend every penny, but at the same time, if there's any left, eh, we don't wanna um, basically go back to the taxpayers at the end of the year and say we didn't budget well enough and and uh, we we owe more, we need more money from your back pocket. We don't wanna do that to our voters.
Yeah, one question I had was um, the tree lighting, if we do it this year, possibly even Halloween, uh, we, is that in the same budget or was that a separate line item?
I think there's four hundred to cover all of it, Halloween and tree lighting, if we combine the.
But that was, is that, it's not included in in our old Home Day budget?
It's a separate line, yeah.
Separate one.
Separate one, okay.
Yep, so uh, uh, we are are going to uh, gonna sit back, relax and let the dust settle for two or three weeks and uh, and also uh, there there are some people who have volunteered for the uh, committee and have them come in to just uh, see who who where it is and that is that is that's great to hear.
To answer his question, this is old Home Day and Memorial Day.
This is.
On this line, on this line item.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
But there were, I think, as I recall, uh, you wanted to make sure there was some capital expenditures you may have to do, a few, a few, you may have to pick up a few small things.
Yeah.
And we're, I'm, I'm prepared to entertain that. That's, that's not an issue with me.
Yeah, all major stuff. I mean, we're talking maybe less than two hundred dollars in expenses.
Yeah.
And that, uh, that hasn't been paid out yet. But, uh, uh, we'll get that in. Uh, but, uh, it, it's rolling right along.
As a, as a board, we'd like to thank all the volunteers that were there that day. And you too, all, all men and women. And all the people that helped. It was a great success. And, uh, as a board, we appreciate your hard work, because, uh, without volunteerism like that, you know, you could never pull off an Old Home Day like that. So.
And the good news, I haven't seen anything on the saying it was a super spurter event either.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll know in a week or two.
People enjoy volunteering. It just, it just can, 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 can make you feel good. So, um,
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
The robotics was, uh, interesting also.
Yeah.
So, we had a good mix of things back there. And, uh, George did a good job getting all the vendors in and stuff like that. We had some last minute ones come in, but when we were setting up on Saturday morning. So.
Yeah.
Uh, people, you know, if you build it, they will come. It's just that simple. And, uh, we're trying to make it so it's fun for everybody and very diverse and.
And what was nice, the weather held out for us.
Yes. A little sprinkle of rain, that's it.
Exactly.
So, everybody loved the weather and, uh.
A little humid, but the thing is, it was a summer, a nice summer day.
Yeah, but a good breeze. I mean, good breeze.
And, uh, and Saturday was six degrees cooler than Friday.
There you go.
That was a big difference, yeah.
Okay, so if the record for the girl that was doing the recording here, you got Tom Casano, Ken Kerber, Don Larson, and the last guy, John Stevens.
And Enid Larson too.
Edith Larson, Larson, yeah. So, if she can figure the voices out, we can go from there.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, here is a football joint.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, forget about that. So, in a little while, we'll get back to you.
All right.
Sure.
Yeah.
Put them together, Ken. It works out real well. Yes, he's got quite a shot down there. If you look down and see his Bon's Old Homestead there later. Have you done the box joint yourself, Ken?
This guy did every.
Okay. Maybe you could stop by and let Eric know.
No need to.
Yeah, I mean, he's done them all by hand. So, it's, uh, he did work with another local craftsman to, uh, understand how to do that joint.
Is this actually red or?
He said it was, yeah.
I think it's a little bit red.
Yeah.
When he finishes up, it'll. Nice workmanship.
Yeah, I thought it'd be nice to have a local craftsman do that.
Oh, yeah. Because we would have to spend money on those box joints anyways.
Right, yes. Okay, um, I'm gonna do this before I forget about it. We've got, um, to receive unanticipated revenues per RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B, Roman numeral three, paragraph B, for two hundred and forty-five dollars from Race Across Dunbar. Lean, do we have that check?
We have cash, yes.
Okay, we have cash. A motion's been made. Any second?
I'll second that.
Okay, took a little while. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um, that's it for that. That was the last of the items. And now, um, Lean, I'd like you to review the changes we spoke about. I didn't have a chance to read this email today. And when you were getting us this copy, Bob said he hadn't had a chance to review it either. So, we're gonna just do a quick overview and then hopefully, um, do them on our next meeting.
Okay.
You can, uh, go, go through them if you'd like.
Okay, so I basically, um, put a list of items that were within the manual that need to be discussed. Uh, first, number one says, um, uh, the front cover has previous, uh, dates. I'm going to remove all the amendment dates except for the last two changes in twenty twenty-one to clean it up, because the first page does say that supersedes others. So, that'll just be a cleanup, um, change. Uh, number two is, uh, wording on page Roman numeral three, copy of the website and criminal record checks. So, that's something that the board had discussed at one point. Um, one of you had mentioned, may perhaps we could put it on the website. Um, do we want to put that in the book? I can, on Roman numeral three, says a copy will also be placed on the town's website. I can do that. It's a public record and.
Jeez. Do we have to put that on?
Well, why don't, why don't we, uh, just, again, we, we, we defer discussion until, um.
Okay, so that's something I want you guys to just review.
Okay.
Uh, page six, discuss, uh, it mentions part-time employees, um, approved reference of exceeding thirty-five hours cap does not trigger full-time employee benefit. So, at one of our previous meetings, the board had, uh, come up with a language. That language has been inserted. Um, I think it reads appropriately. Um, if the board has any other recommendations.
Lean, hold on just a second.
Uh, we got special masks here. I'd like to give you each one.
Oh, oh, nice.
There you go.
Thank you, sir.
Well, now, you got a souvenir for this year. Old Home Day.
Very good.
Were these pre-worn?
No, no.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Don. All right, sorry, Lean, he was in the background there.
That's okay. Um, so, number, the third item, bullet item is page six. There's a reference of employees working over the thirty-five hour cap. So.
Okay.
Um, the other item on page six is elected officials. At some point, the board had mentioned some, about, um, referencing the elected officials' compensation to follow the annual CPI or to follow the annual CPI of the employees. So, that's still unclear. There's been discussion in the past as to not addressing, um, that particular position.
It would gone both ways on that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, page number five, reference, uh, excuse me, bullet five of page eight, um, a small change in, to the step, um, increase plan should include full and part-time, because it does cover both departments. So, that word's been inserted. Um, number six, page twelve, highway winter maintenance. Um, do we want to review bullet number two? Equipment must be operational ready and on site at the Dunbar Highway Department. That's the way it reads currently. Um, there was some concern as to whether.
Yeah, it's not always at the highway department.
Correct. So, that was something you may want to revisit. Also, bullet number four, recommend adding that the subcontractor and equipment must be personally able or, uh, available, whichever way you want to write, uh, word that to, uh, report for winter maintenance service to qualify for the five-hour weekly standby. Where we had the, uh, situation.
Entry last year.
It's, it's, I think it's important just to elaborate a little bit more, so that there's no question as to whether someone requesting it, if they can't come in because they're sick or whatever, um, that it's clear in black and white. And then, um, number seven, uh, travel allowance, that was something the board said that you may revisit and consider, uh, whether you want to continue to offer that, um, benefit. Uh, we have it in our personnel policy. So, it's, uh, something that, is current and active. And you should consider either whether to keep it in there or remove it if that's what you choose to do. The travel allowance wording also is not very clear. Um, I would recommend including the reference that the personal sick, downtime, holiday or vacation leave does not count as time work. So, then it makes it clear for the county department.
Yeah, because we had questions on that already. So.
Bob wanted to revisit, we wanted to revisit that too, see if we're gonna.
Right, continue.
Right. And then each line should add full-time or part-time, working a minimum, um, et cetera, so that it's very clear. So, that when the county department is calculating the, the person's hours, that it will be, um, calculated appropriately and be clear in the, in the personnel. Number eight, uh, is on page thirteen. Add a new line to reference the full-time lease, observe the actual date of the holiday, not the observed holiday. We've had issues in our department, our, the accounting department payroll, that when they completed, um, their timesheets in the summary page, we inadvertently paid the wrong person overtime pay, because we observed the, um, federal holiday, whereas they observed the actual holiday. So, to make it clear, which, it would be helpful to have that wording in the personnel. And I did run that by Christopher Millard. He agreed that the language would be adequate for us to put that in there. And number nine, page eighteen, change the dollar amount that the board has set for, um, bereavement and a donation of flowers. I think if we just kept it as a generic to discuss it or set it at the time that it occurs, it would be a little bit more helpful to, for me to, uh, you know, propose a fifty-dollar limit, which is way it's worded. You might have two flowers in a vase and then it won't look very, uh, appropriate for.
Dating lines of that too.
Yeah, I would think that that's a reasonable change.
So, they said the little things that going through this, I don't know if you want to do a workshop, review it, you know, workshops or.
Yeah, or we could do it at the, if we have a short meeting, uh.
Well, we wanted to have a, talk about wages and salaries too.
Yeah.
So, we need to talk about that. So.
Yeah. But the reason why, the reason why I bring it to you is we're going through some new employment here. I don't have a final official clean copy to hand out that, um.
Yeah, and if we are gonna change the, uh, travel allowance, we should have that fixed as well. So.
Right.
Yeah, it's time to go through it. If you guys want, we can set a date. To go through that and have an open hearing. I know that, um, Joe Marie was gonna get a few more numbers from you. I know she's been busy with the auditor. So, I'd like to give her a little while to get that out of the way. Once she's done with the auditor, she can get those few more numbers. We'll compare them with mine and Bob and the other information we have. And we'll make a consensus on that as well while we meet. So, we won't set a date right now, Lean, but we'll talk with Joe Marie and then we'll.
And we're, you're looking strictly for the transfer station positions?
Yeah, just that to start with and then.
You know, before we talk about the changes to, uh, the, the contractors we use for plowing, we might want to have a chance to talk with Jeff, because we were supposed to review that in April.
Yeah, you're right.
And we didn't, we haven't touched on it. And so that we're both, we're all understanding whatever change we make.
Would we make that appointment, Bob, on when we talk about it?
Yeah.
We'll see if Jeff can be present to talk about that one. So, we'll do it all that day if we can.
He thinks we will be incredible.
Because I don't want to leave somebody out and have them come back.
No, I'll put a note on there.
Well, we're also gonna have that public hearing to accept those funds. And he's expecting to be there to listen to what the board has to say about the money.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with you, because we were gonna review that as well. So.
Okay, make sure he's included.
So, once we hear back from them, we'll go through there. So, we've reviewed the personnel plan. Thanks for getting it together for us, Lean. Keeping us on task there. Um, going back to, uh, public comment, anything from you, Fred?
Nope.
It's been pretty quiet tonight. Okay. Um, I'm gonna bring it to the town administrator. Do you have anything else for us?
Um, well, I've already covered the fact that, uh, we've applied for a grant. And, um, so we have just over three hundred thousand dollars that the town will be receiving. We have to accept that grant under the RSA, and that would be to have a public hearing. So, I will be doing that in the next few weeks. Um, our, the office has been extremely busy with audits. We're still working with the financial auditor. We had an audit from the state today to find, uh, after five, every five years, where our files get reviewed. So, um, we did quite well with that. We should, I expect a report from them. And, um, we are very, very busy in the office. So.
Yeah, good to see.
But we have a, a very positive, upbeat, um, staff that's working together. So, it's really been a pleasant experience to work with everybody there.
Yeah, we're just gonna be working together nicely.
Yeah.
Okay, bring it back to the board members. Bob?
I'm also.
Mike?
Uh, did, on Sergeant Romano's contract, did we have a chance to review it?
I did not, only because, uh, you said, did we have the review back from our town attorney?
Yes, that's why I gave you a copy of it last night.
I do have it. I didn't read that. I, I'll make a note to do that.
I thought I was gonna hear a finalization from you.
I, I, you have, you have a copy of the finalization.
Okay.
Okay, he didn't make a set draft.
That's agreed to by both sides, right?
No, I wanted to get your input before I went to Chris.
So, yeah, well, I'll review that at the next meeting.
I can take my draft.
I read what you gave me.
Yes.
And I was satisfied with it.
Okay.
And I thought that was a, you were kind of recommending that's where you guys are at. So, that was my question.
Then, I talked to Sergeant Romano this week. And I said, based upon this meeting today, that I would meet with him, uh, early next week to review the contract. And if he has got no issues with the contract, I said, you shouldn't have any issues. It was, it was more of a cleanup.
Mike, I'll read it. If I have any issues, I'll call you.
All right, then, before, and Bob.
Because I read it already. And I, I thought that that's what we were going with.
Okay.
That's what you guys can agree with. I found no problems.
Right. Okay, that was just the recommendations from the, from our lawyer. And so, I got to meet with him and give him a copy. But I wanted to give you all input.
Yeah, I'll read through it. If I have any issues, I'll, I'll call you either way and let you know.
That's, that's fair enough.
Do you still have your copies? Because you had gotten the attorney with comments and then, yeah.
And the second thing is, remember that project you gave me, Dave, last time?
Which one? I give you a lot of projects.
The nomination of the volunteer.
Yeah.
I have a name.
Okay, great.
And I would like to discuss it non-public for about two minutes, two minutes in non-public. And then, because I don't think we should do it in public.
All right. So, um, I have nothing further for the board, um, that we haven't spoken about already tonight. So, I'm okay to go into non-public. So, I'll make a motion to go non-public per RSA ninety-one dash A three, Roman numeral two, paragraph C.
Correct, yeah.
See, I memorized that already.
We'll take a recess for, for one minute, give, uh, Fred a chance to shut down.